Ask to leave the room. Finally, please be aware that it is our policy that no person, candidate, or political group is authorized to use or edit any media from this event for campaign purposes. I'm happy to share that two University of Scranton students are helping with this event this evening. In a minute, I'll introduce Philip Huffman, who is the president of the College Republicans. He will introduce our three candidates and our three panelists. After that, Grace Lennox, who is the president of the College Democrats, will review the rules and the debate format that all of the candidates have agreed to follow. Philip, we're all ears.
Beginning on the left side of the room, we are joined this evening by independent candidate Michael Capellini, Republican nominee Chet Merely, Democratic nominee Tom Welby. Our panel of journalists who have selected and will be asking all the questions includes Connor Core from W B R E R E, Donnie Collins from the Times Tribune, and Stacy Lang from W N E P.
Moments ago, candidates drew lots to determine the rotating order in which they will answer the first and all subsequent questions. They again drew lots to determine the order in which closing statements will be delivered. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Anytime not used is gone. Time cannot be saved for future questions. Our timers will hold up a 30-second sign for the candidates to see when that amount of time remains. If necessary, our timers will hold up a sign that says "stop" when the two minutes have expired. The candidate who is answering their time when their time expires may complete their sentence after the "stop" sign is held up, but if they try to go on any longer, we will need to interrupt. Candidates are asked to please direct all of their remarks to the audience and to refrain from trying to directly engage with other candidates. This causes confusions about the order in which candidates are supposed to answer and could result in an uneven distribution of time. Finally, because we have such a large group on the stage, each candidate is limited to just one 30-second rebuttal opportunity. If a candidate wants to respond immediately to answer given by immediately to an answer given by an opponent, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Again, you may only do this once.
All right. If the candidates are ready, we can now move on to the first question, which will be asked by Connor Core and first answered by Chet Merly.
Mr. Murray, Lackawanna County gets a significant amount of its budget from the state. Since the state budget is now 115 days late, how do you reassure people living and working in Lackawanna County that the services provided by the county will continue to be available?
Good question. Lackawanna County does have additional funds that they could pull from. The new budget that they just initiated and proposed has supposedly been balanced. The funding from the state, in one of my conversations with a local senator, said that they are looking at possibly releasing some money for certain funding for programs. That's as far as I know.
Mr. Welby.
I agree, and the state is looking at providing funding for not just Lackawanna County, obviously, but across the Commonwealth, all of our counties are facing the same situation, and they're looking at providing for some funding. And in the news recently is the information on the lie heap applications. That is past tense. That won't start until December, a month later than expected, which is very difficult for a lot of people that are facing high heating costs. Everybody's heating costs last year were through the roof. It's not going to be any better this year, but that's something that is already set in stone. That's going to be delayed. The county does have reserves, and according to the budget presentation that they made, the presentation made by PFM, it appears that the county will hold their own, assuming that the budget is settled by December. If we get into December and the budget is still not settled, the county will be in some difficult financial situations because of not being reimbursed on particularly some of the family and child services reimbursements that they get. Almost 80% of the money that's spent on family and child services is reimbursed, but if the budget isn't settled by December, we're going to be in pretty tough shape. We're hoping, obviously, all three of us, that Harrisburg and the federal government act responsibly and takes care of all of our counties.
Finally, Mr. Capellini.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate exactly what Tom said. I mean, ultimately, when you look at every level of government at this point, it's incredibly broken, and we're seeing that. And the only people that suffer from that are the taxpayers and the citizens of this amazing country, and in particular, the county. You know, with the potentially balanced budget, I would concur that there are potential areas where we can pull funding from to ensure that the most vulnerable have the opportunity to ensure that their heat stays on, that they stay fed, that their children get the necessities that they need to continue. But we really do need to work with every single level of government should the impasse at the state level and the federal level continues, because we are in for quite a road in the next couple of months should this continue forward. It's a very terrifying thing, I know, especially for the seniors and for the single parents out there, and I feel for them, and I really do pray, and as I'm sure Chet and Tom do, that something breaks here, because our government's broken, and we need to fix it immediately to ensure that we have the funds that we need.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, Brenda Sacco's recent appointment to the Board of Commissioners via the Home Rule Charter process and the ongoing legal debate surrounding that process have created significant uncertainty about the length of time the eventual winner of this special election will serve. After taking office, Ms. Sacco expressed hope that she would be able to keep hold of the seat for the remainder of the unexpired term, which runs into January of 2028. All three of you are running in the Commissioner's Special Election, all of you funded campaigns, and all of you are appealing tonight for votes, speaking on the issues. If you win the special election November 4th, would you commit to defending the outcome of this election and any legal challenges to the prescribed Home Rule Charter process to ensure you are able to serve the full, unexpired term for which you were elected? And we are starting with Mr. Welby.
To be clear, if I am lucky enough to be elected and the election is certified, I will be serving as county commissioner until the end of this term. And I believe that when this special election was dictated and mandated by the court, that overrides any other, anything else. And with all due respect, if she, if Brenda were to pursue it, Brenda's an incredibly talented and intelligent person, and if she chooses to pursue that, she certainly has every right to do that if she feels that she has that responsibility or ability to do that. You know, certainly that has nothing to do with me. That's her decision. But I think that a decision by any judge or anybody that's going to make a decision regarding this down the road, I think if they have the choice of a decision, rather, an appointment made by a committee versus an election made by the people, they're going to choose the election made by the people. And I'm ready to serve till they say I have to leave.
Thank you. Mr. Capellini, you're next.
Yeah, ultimately, first and foremost, I want to thank you guys. I didn't thank anybody for setting this up. This is a wonderful opportunity to see democracy at its finest, democracy at work. So thank you to the College Republicans and Democrats for being here, Brian and the entire panel. It's wonderful. And thank you to my two friends up here, Chet and Tom. This is exactly what should be happening in the county. When we talk about the special election, I mean, you know, for any three of us to sit here and talk about it is speculation at this point. What I do know is, is that the special election was definitely decided on, on two separate courts. I actually sat in court and defended the special election myself. I was cross-examined by the Democratic Committee's attorney, and I fought very hard to ensure that each and every one of your voices were heard. So if it does come to the point where there is some kind of challenge, I can promise you immensely that I am here to serve as your county commissioner and to ensure that the voice of the people is heard with the free and fair election, an election by the people and for the people.
Thank you. Mr. Merly.
I wish Brenda Sacco well. On that question, I spoke to four lawyers today, and I got three different answers. Yes, there will be challenges, and I do not believe that this is, that this fighting between this party is going to end with this appointment. I think it's just going to continue, and it just continually shows how Lackawanna County is broken. It's not about a Democrat versus Republican anymore. It's just infighting within the party, and I certainly do not expect it to end anytime soon. So even after she was sworn in, I believe you'll see legal challenge after legal challenge. And if any of us here win, I believe it will be contested, depending on who the winner really is. If I win, it certainly will be contested. I'm not going to say which one of my opponents would, whether they're going to be contested or not. It just boils down to infighting within the party, which has caused irreparable harm and made Lackawanna County a laughingstock.
Gentlemen, Lackawanna County's first property tax reassessment in 60 years is nearly complete. Do you support a pause in that process? And if so, how do you reconcile that choice with a court order that requires the reassessment to be complete by the beginning of 2026? And we're going to begin with Mr. Capellini.
Our opinions don't matter when it comes to the reassessment process. It was signed into law in 2022 by President Judge Tom Munley. To stop and/or pause the reassessment would be detrimental to the taxpayer, an already burdened tax bracket. We have to ensure that we move forward with the reassessment. It's a very imperfect process. Being a past realtor, I understand that very much so. My mother is a broker here in Lackawanna County, so we definitely understand how frustrated the people are. But realistically, to even think of saying that pausing or stopping the reassessment is feasible, I have to say, Chet and Tom, I think you're lying to the taxpayer at that point, because it is a court-ordered procedure.
Mr. Merly.
Court orders could be extended or appealed. There's no question that the reassessment was needed, and there is a deadline, but that deadline could be pushed forward. And concerning the legal, again, I spoke to four lawyers. I got eight answers this time. The reassessment was rushed, and it's left taxpayers frustrated and extremely confused. The adjoining counties of Monroe and Schooke Hill, both had reassessments done, and that process, they knew what their tax burden was going to be. No one in Lackawanna County has an idea of what their tax is going to be. The reassessment, the prior reassessment, was down a fraction of what the homeowner's property was worth. The new reassessment is 100% of the value supposedly. So taxpayers have a number down here, and now a number, which is sometimes 10 or more times. So no one knows what it is. The county is touting that there's only been a 4% appeal, but that 4% appeal is because people do not understand. I personally know two people who are going to lose their home. Now, if the county is saying that this is net zero, then what is the rush? If only 4% of the people appealed it, then why can't you at least come up with an estimate? Because the new millage is supposed to be your total budget divided by the reassessment equals the millage. So why couldn't property owners be giving a, at least an idea of what their tax was going to be? So it needs to be paused until we get it right.
Mr. Welby.
The, it's, there's so much smoke and mirrors going on here, and the reality is, our commissioners in the past were not responsible enough to order a reassessment in the last over 50 years, and they didn't do it, because if they did do that, they were afraid they wouldn't be reelected. This reassessment that happened didn't come down because of the commissioner's decision or a court decision. It came down because of an agreement between people that were suing to have this done after 50-plus years, and they came to an agreement with the county, and that was ratified by the judge. That was the court order. How many, how many, I wonder if the administration has gone back to the people, the Center for Community Justice, that came and argued this point. If we went back to them and said, hey, look, we have 114,000 properties that were assessed, 4,800 were appealed. If you have, according to Dr. Google, if you have an assessment that has gone over 20 years since the last reassessment, you expect 10 to 12% appeals. This is over 50 years. We have 4% have appealed it, and they haven't appealed it because they don't understand it. They were never given the opportunity to know what their taxes were going to be, never. I have a next-door neighbor, a 94-year-old Korean War veteran. His current assessment is $16,000. His new assessment is $206,000. Sam has no idea what that means as to what his new tax bill is going to be, and that's not fair. It's not right. And what's even worse is this administration did not help in any way whatsoever to help educate people as to what their new tax was going to be, to help educate people on how to fight for this reassessment, and to help people to do that, to help them file that appeal. They said, well, just go and get three comparables. Do you think anybody up and down my block even knows what a comparable is? It's so wrong. They don't know where a comparable is, they don't know where to get it. We have so many people that have no idea where they're at, and I think that a court would see the light of that. Also, 70% of those that have been appealed have been lowered. If 70% were wrong, what is right with this reassessment? We need to just slow it down, just slow it down, and as Chet said, just stop it, and we flatline, we just continue it next year. Sorry.
If I can have a rebuttal to that?
Yes. It's 30 seconds.
Fine. Thank you.
I mean, ultimately, these are all wonderful talking points in the political landscape, and I concur. As I stated from the very beginning, there are people that are going to unfortunately suffer at this point. We have to work with them. We have to ensure that they do have the proper tools. None of us here were involved in the process of starting this particular reassessment. But I will say again, if we're going to sit here and we're going to try to posit, we have the potential of seeing millions of dollars in penalties that will hit the county, which will inevitably fall down to each and every person. which will inevitably fall down to each and every person sitting in this room. And what my biggest thought process, oh, sorry, I have to stop.
Would you like to also use your?
Might as well get mine out of the way and use it.
But that gives Chet an advantage, Tom, so just be ready.
It is true that we don't want to put the county in any kind of position where we're going to be jeopardized with any kind of court order. And if it's clear, if it's clear that we're going to be assessed a million-dollar fine or something, but again, I don't think there's a court in the world that would see the light of this and argue that. If it is clear that that's the case, then I would suggest that we don't pursue it. If we're going to be fined X million dollars, but that what we do instead is spend the next six months of next year correcting things for people and helping them to fight this gosh darn irresponsible. I'm sorry, I said, stop.
It's not easy to do in 30 seconds.
All right. So, the next question is going to start with Mr. Merly as well. So, in addition to working with Commissioner Gaughan and Commissioner Trumack, what is your biggest concern that you want to face as county commissioner?
There's a lot. Now, if you're referring to working with either one of them, I, of course, could work for anyone, with anyone, as long as we're directed towards the same goal. And the goal is not political, and it's not personal. It's about the taxpayer. As long as my two commissioners are focused on the same end, then we could work together. If we're going to get off on a tangent with political waste and a budget that certainly could be trimmed, I mean, we've seen tax increases over the last, forget the 33%, go back a year, add 7%, go back four years, add another 11%. You're looking at over a 50% tax increase over the last six years. And quite frankly, what do you have to show for it? What additional services have you to show for that? So, working with these commissioners, as long as we're on the same page and focused on the end goal, which is to trim this budget, add accountability to this budget, then we could work together.
Mr. Welby?
Well, as far as Commissioner Gaughan and Commissioner Trumack go, I would feel good, they're both friends, and I would feel good working with both of them. And it's, we've all seen the animosity that's been going on. It's like little kids in a sandbox, just throwing sand at each other, and we clearly have to get away from that and get along and work things out. And go back to the old days, I hate to reference something like that, but you talk about days when, when years ago, people would sit down, they'd argue all day long, then they'd sit down and work things out. They'd compromise. They'd work with each other. We have to get back to that. And some of the other things that we definitely have to work on, at the budget hearing, the PFM hearing, they talked about that this coming year, our budget should be okay. We don't need a tax increase. But they suggested, PFM suggested that going forward, that we institute, I believe it was a 10% tax increase annually that they thought would be necessary. Well, I don't think we should be looking at furthering the burden on taxpayers that are already hammered with the increased utility bills, the increased food bills, the heat costs, and all of that. We should be looking at cutting our expenses, as Chet mentioned, but also increasing other sources of revenue. There's a lot of other areas that, you know, we should be bringing in more businesses into our area, not unlike as you see in Pittston. If you've been down to an area where Pittston is just off of Route 315, there is a huge, massive complex of businesses that have been brought in, manufacturing businesses, and all these industries that are there that would be perfect up along the Casey Highway. And I think we have to look at increasing revenue from properties that aren't homeowners' properties.
Finally, Mr. Capellini.
So, first and foremost, we're hearing regarding cutting the budget, cutting the budget, cutting the budget. Ultimately, when we look at the past couple of years, when the current administration took over, from what I understand, they were actually billed out for 13 months with only 12 months to pay. So, in order to make up for these particular deficiencies, they started to cut and cut and cut, which is the first thing that you do in government. You try to figure out where there's waste, et cetera. The workforce itself was cut by 10% at Lackawanna County. Okay? So, how much do we cut? And to Tom's, it's not often that I agree with a Republican and my Democratic counterpart here, but like realistically, when we sit here and we talk about it, we, they're right. It's all about the governance. We need to be together. It does not matter regardless of the letter next to your name. Politics is local, ladies and gentlemen. We have to work with one another. And in regarding the future, my biggest concern as county commissioner, should I be afforded the opportunity to serve as your next county commissioner, is my son's future. I have one two-year-old and another one on the way 20 days after the election. We have to ensure that we bring to this area more sustainable jobs to ensure that the sustainability brings young families to stay here. Then we have to look at the healthcare situation that we have, where our elderly have to worry every day if they're able to pay their bills. There's not a pediatric care center in this area. God forbid, one of my two sons falls out of a tree or gets hurt. I have nowhere to take him. They could stabilize him, and they have to, they have to lifelike him from there. These are the issues we have to start looking at, and it takes open dialogue regardless of party, and that is what I plan to do should I be afforded the opportunity to be your next county commissioner.
Thank you. Spinning off that a little bit, Lackawanna County taxpayers, as you mentioned, faced a nearly 33% property tax hike this year, blamed on a massive structural deficit exacerbated by the county's failure to increase revenues and mitigate rising expenditures in recent years. The proposed 2026 budget holds taxes steady, but what should the county do in future years to achieve balanced budgets without another double-digit tax hike? And Mr. Welby?
The, what I just referred to is one of the things, and that is bringing in more revenue. And again, continue to look at ways that we can cut our expenses. I mean, I'm not sure exactly what has been done in the past. I wasn't in there. But I would like to meet with all of our department heads and our role officers and talk with them about reducing costs. It's something that we have to do. We have to do it in business, and I've worked in business for a long time outside of politics, and it's something that's expected. It's something that you have to do. You know, in order to survive, in order to thrive, you first have to survive, and we have to do that. We also have to look at all other alternative means of raising revenue, and that is bringing more industry into our area and working on that and filling up that Casey Highway with industry. But also, besides all of that, we need to work with a closer relationship to our elected officials in Harrisburg and in Washington. We aren't doing everything that we can, and some of it is because of politics, in not going after more money that's available to us, that's going to other counties, and we should be getting a greater share here. Additionally, our county grants department is skeletal, skeletal at best. And that one particular grant writer is writing grants not just for the county, but writing grants for municipalities and writing grants for nonprofits and groups all through the area. They're even writing grants for little league groups and city entities within the city of Scranton. The county is writing their grants, and we really need to expand a department that brings money into our county, doesn't cost us money.
Thank you, Mr. Capellini.
Yeah, so another issue that we really have to consider is our education here. If we're going to continue to try to bring in new industry, we really have to start concentrating on the educational side. And unfortunately, from the federal government down, we're seeing massive cuts, massive cuts, in particular to Title I schools. $4.7 billion are being cut to Title I schools, which is around 94% of the current schools in Lackawanna County, public schools. We need to really think about where we're going when it comes to education, number one. And then when we talk about, I agree with Tom completely, this is very strange, by the way. I agree with Tom completely in the fact that these new revenue streams are imperative to our growth. The new revenue streams can be, I mean, one thing that we kind of are overlooking is the fact that we have the potential, and it seems like it's coming, pun intended, down the track with Amtrak coming to Scranton. That is going to be, that is going to not only improve our infrastructure, which then ensures that we have young families moving back here, that's going to go ahead and continue to feed into our local government, but it's also a great opportunity for families to still be able to get to Philadelphia, New York, et cetera, easily without an issue, and that is going to only continue to grow our tax base.
Thank you, Mr. Merly.
I've had over 16 years of budgetary responsibility. I've had to budget for capital operating and maintenance, and I won't waste your time with the difference between the three. Two weeks into the next month, I would be given a printout of expenditures. That printout would be compared to my budget, line item by line item. If I was off by 5%, plus or minus, I had to write a variance. I spent about four to six hours looking at the budget and talking to people who have a degree of responsibility in it. That level of accountability does not exist. So, when I ask monthly, no. Quarterly, no. Biannually, no. You go an entire year before you realize what you have spent? Yes. How is that possible? And the answer was, this isn't business. This is government. One of the tools that we had is personal justification. When we did a budget, and sometimes we did a zero-based budget, which you had to perform every one of your tasks, a zero-based budget, you have to start from zero and work your entire budget till the end. You have to name every single task to do it. A personal justification form takes all of your tasks and puts it in a weight. And if you need to be replaced, I look at your tasks, and if I could draw on two other people to do them, then I'm not replacing you. Overtime is something that I think was out of control in certain departments. We also had a formula where, when we hit a threshold, then we would replace that individual. But if we didn't hit that threshold, then we would just continue with the overtime. All these tools could be used to balance this budget.
Next, I have a multi-part question about data centers. While acknowledging that a commissioner's role in data center courtship may be limited, what's your message to municipal leaders right now confronting the development of these facilities? Do you think data centers are healthy for Lackawanna County? Should we approach these developers with caution or embrace them with open arms? And we're going to start with Mr. Capellini.
So, this is definitely an issue that I have at the forefront of the campaign. Again, I have two young children, well, one right now and soon, like I said, in 20, 20-some days at this point, and they're my number one concern. So, when we talk about the data center issue, AI is definitely the future, but what is not the future is allowing these massive corporations to come into our area, pillage our land, raise our electricity bills by nearly 25%, and take all of the local water supply to nearly zero. And these aren't my opinions, these are statistics. If you go look at some of the communities in Ohio and Virginia that have multiple data centers, like are being proposed throughout Lackawanna County, you're seeing a disastrous, disastrous environmental, economic, housing, and socioeconomic problem. We have to be the leaders in this. Now, from the county commissioner's standpoint, we have to ensure that as this comes to fruition, and honestly, I am a proponent against it at this point because there's just not enough. We're talking about rushing reassessment. We're literally shoving these data centers down the throats of people without giving them even the slightest opportunity to think about it or understand the pros and cons. So, as your county commissioner, I want to be that voice of transparency. I want to be that person that is in every single meeting that I can be with the municipalities. Right now, there's a bill in the Senate, Bill 939, that literally takes, literally takes the local municipality zoning power away from them. Literally, we have to sit here, and we, as the citizens of Lackawanna County, the voters of Lackawanna County, we need to pay attention, and I want to be that voice for each and every one of you should I be county commissioner.
Mr. Merly?
First, a disclaimer. I currently chair the Blakely Borough Planning Commission, and I've been there for 15 years, so I can't tell you that I'm for or against data centers because I would risk that. Blakely just went through a 200-acre proposed zoning change in a residential area for four data centers that, so, understand, please. I'm also a member of the Lackawanna County Regional Planning Commission, and I'm also a member of the Northeast Chapter of the American Planning Association. I'm well-versed. I have certainly over 30 years in data centers. You cannot exclude any use in any town. So, there has to be a place for a landfill, a power plant, a data center. In Blakely Borough, when they came in to try and rezone 200 acres, because we had redone our zoning ordinance, it put us in a better position than our adjoining towns in both Chesapeake and Archibald. There was a page and a half in there called unspecified use. Unspecified use allowed, and both lawyers had called, and I had told both lawyers, just go to page 41, and that's in Blakely zoning ordinance. So, they could not rush in Blakely Borough. Unfortunately, Archibald was in a slightly different position, and, sorry, I do have 30 seconds, so I'll wrap it up. When it comes to water, the proposals in Archibald, you have Lake Scranton filtration and Carbondale filtration. They're not nearly at capacity. You have water. You have transmission lines. They could handle it. The data center proposed for Blakely probably uses 100 times the amount of power as Blakely and Oliphant together. Blakely and Oliphant have their own electrical distribution. So, from a power point of view, from production, that's something that should be thought about.
Mr. Welby?
It certainly is difficult, but there's a lot of misinformation that's going on regarding the data centers, and a lot of the information that's being referenced is from data centers that are, that have been in place for 10 years, and particularly in the water use, and they're talking about data centers now that water use is recirculated, water. But that aside, if, and also, to your point, Stacy, it's true. The county commissioners do not have a say legislatively, do not have a say where a power, excuse me, a data center can go. But they, as Michael said, they can certainly attend these meetings and make it clear their position. Number one, if a community does not want a data center, then the data center should not be allowed in that community. It's as simple as that. And it's up to their zoning commission to have their public hearings and do it properly so it can't be appealed beyond reason. And if it doesn't belong in the community, one that they proposed recently, it was in a neighborhood. I mean, literally, a block away from houses. That is wrong, and it was a mistake for them to try to do that because all it did was enrage all of us that something like this could happen when perhaps back in, along the Casey Highway, there are areas where it could go if the technology is appropriate. But if a community does not want a power center, excuse me, a data center, then they shouldn't, they should be allowed to block that data center, just as simple as that.
Could I have an additional 30 seconds? I'm not rebuttling anything. I just didn't finish.
Yes, you do get one 30 seconds. We'll call it something else.
All zoning is local. Not the federal government, not the state government, not even the county government should have a say over local zoning ordinances. It stays local. And in the past, certain people tried to put certain restrictions and open up zones where they didn't belong. In the case of 939, that really doesn't have any teeth in it as far as putting it anywhere. All that really does is saying, you're going to treat a data center like you're going to treat anything else. And quite frankly, legally, you have to do that. You cannot discriminate.
So, I know that I don't, but I have to, I have to say one thing there. So, you're saying that the current bill proposed in the Senate by a local senator, a cosigner, and two others, has no teeth to it? Chet?
Mr. Capellini, you can use part of your two.
Sorry, I forgot you said that to me. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're welcome to.
I apologize. I apologize. I broke protocol. My apologies.
So, I've got one coming. Let me mark that.
At least one. At least one.
Thank you.
All right. So, our next question is going to surround county government, back to county government, excuse me. So, Mr. Merly, we'll start with you. Where in the county government would you look to cut spending or otherwise achieve cost savings?
All of it. So, nothing should not be looked at. Once again, you start with an org chart, and you go department by department. You look at things of consolidation. You have 33 miles of road that you maintain in the county. That is not a lot. You only collect liquid fuels on a very, which is very small. So, you have to have all of this equipment to maintain these roads, to plow them in the winter, to handle them in the summer. the winter, to handle them in the summer. Get rid of that. Get rid of those 33 miles. Go to the state, let the state take it over. I'm just giving you one example. Now you're left with 150 bridges. What do you do with those? Well, you don't have the personnel to fix bridges. So take the existing personnel, maybe put them with parks, combine departments if need be. Those are just two examples of trying to possibly consolidate where need be. Once again, personal justification forms. What do you do, and how often do you do it? How many hours a week? You use those, and if someone leaves and you don't need to replace them, you don't replace them. If someone isn't really working to their potential, they don't have enough time, then you find other tasks for them to do.
Mr. Welby.
I like some of his ideas, and I think that's great. But one of our issues that we also have is that you can only cut down to the bone so far, and then you start to hurt yourself. And we can't allow that to happen. But what we do have to do, besides cutting expenses everywhere we possibly can and being serious about it, and some people are going to get hurt by it, there's no question about it. It happens in business every day, and it happens in government, or should happen in government every day as well. But what we do have to do to justify not being able to cut anymore, or to do something and able to cut our expenses, that again is increasing revenue. We have ways in which we can increase revenue. We have to pursue that a little bit greater. The three of us will be meeting this coming week with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're meeting with them to discuss areas and ways in which we, together, the county, and all the municipalities, together with the chamber, growing our industry, attracting more industry into our area to find those things that can provide for more property tax. We have a company that has two plants, a company in South Korea that has two plants in the United States. And their first one was in Scott Township. And just this past summer, they opened their second plant in the United States, and it's in Scott Township. We need to go out and bring in more of that kind of industry. That... Granted, maybe they have tax breaks in the beginning, but the one plant is already at their eighth year of tax break out of 10. And they start paying taxes, I believe it's after four years. So they've been paying taxes, and every year it's more and more and more. We just have to continue more of that, and I'm sure we'll be talking about that on Tuesday at our meetings with the chamber to grow our businesses.
Mr. Capellini.
Yep. So Brian, I'm going to do this the right way this time. Yeah, so just real fast, you know, regarding Chet's comment on Bill 939, I think that the local municipalities will be happy to hear that you think that it doesn't have teeth to it. So that's a good thing, and I hope that that is a message moving forward in your campaign. Number two, the other point that you brought up, allowing the state to take over specific roads, I got to tell you, I don't know if you've driven down the turnpike or any state roads lately, they're not doing a great job because the funding isn't there, guys. So we have to ensure that we work together and we find ways to make this infrastructure work here in Lackawanna County. Third, I am concerned a little bit because your proposals, Chet, sound a little bit like Doge. I don't know if you talked to Elon Musk on the way here, but that's neither here nor there either. When we sit here and we talk about the actual future and what we're looking to do here, it's all about innovation, it's all about our children's future. And like Tom said, we are going to sit with the Chamber of Commerce here in the next couple of days. I had the opportunity to talk to Bob Durkin also, and it's here. Ladies and gentlemen, it's here. There are tech centers here that help entrepreneurial businesses come off the ground with low percentage loans. There are, up in Carbondale right now, they are doing incredible work with the food service industry to get to ensure that people don't leave this area and have the sustainability and the jobs here. It's really something incredible. We have a huge opportunity here in Lackawanna County, and a very close relationship with the Chamber of Commerce is exactly, exactly what is going to get Lackawanna County over the finish line. And I am very, very proud to say that, and I can't wait to see it happen, regardless of a victory or not.
Thank you. I want to ask you gentlemen about housing. Obviously, not an issue exclusive to Lackawanna County, it's a national issue at this point, critical for current residents, but also when it comes to growing communities and growing tax bases. As commissioner, what steps would you take to help increase the county's supply of affordable housing? And we'll start with Mr. Welby.
It's so incredibly difficult, and the housing issues in Lackawanna County, I think, are worse than they are in most of the other counties in Pennsylvania. We have people coming in from New York and New Jersey, buying up houses and turning Grandma's house into four, five, six apartments or rooming houses, and with it raising the rents horribly. And it's compounded by the 33% property tax increase that we just had, and now the reassessments. And people tend to think of reassessments just affecting the property owner, the landlord. It affects renters. There isn't a business in the world, if they're selling quarts of milk, and they're paying a dollar for a quart, and their distributor comes in and says, that quart of milk is now $2. When their prices are increased, they have to pass that on. The same way any landlord, any property owner, whether it's a landlord for renters or landlord to a small business, they have to pass that on. And it's so difficult that we have that situation compounded by so many different things in our area. And to come up with affordable housing, we have so many developers in our area that are providing for new housing, new rental housing, and townhouse housing. But it's not affordable to a lot of people. To some people it is, but it's not affordable to a lot of people. And we talk about putting in some more housing developments. I live over near Hilltop. My backyard is Hilltop, it's a little housing development in Scranton. And they're putting an extension onto Hilltop, and it's actually owned by a private developer. But there are so many objections, when anybody tries to put in a low-income housing project, it's not in my neighborhood, seems to be the philosophy that everyone has. We have to get past that and provide for housing that's genuinely affordable to the people that are in need. I don't know how to do it, other than ourselves up top. Rescued.
Thank you, Mr. Capellini.
Yeah, I mean, Tom, I'm with you. It's not an over-the-night fix here. And not to speak about... I kind of wish I had phoned a friend, to be honest with you, because, you know, the lady over here is a great broker, and she can give insight time and time again. But when you think about it realistically, our housing issue is... I would say that with our local developers, there really is something that's flourishing. The issue that we have is, as Tom said, is the affordability. So how do we have affordability, affordable housing here in this area? We have to, not to talk about it nauseam, we have to continue to build on our future. We have to continue that. These businesses, this is a region that's attracting new business. We have to ensure that we bring younger families into this area. We have an aging tax bracket, and the only way to build on that tax bracket is to ensure that we have the capabilities for sustainable jobs in this area. When you have sustainability, you can make housing more affordable for each and every person in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Merly.
I've had a very storied career, and even in my side, I've been... Have a partner, and I've done a 53-lot subdivision in Mayfield called Mayfield Heights. I own a four-family and two doubles, and of course, my own home. In my career, we've developed a PEI power park where we used what was known then as tax incremental financing. So we built a subdivision just for businesses. We kept laminations from moving to Florida or Texas, one or the others. We brought in two other businesses. We relocated the headquarters of the utility from a superfund site in Scranton, just below Steamtown, to Archibald. We did that, what was known as tax incremental financing. We couldn't get very many grants, we were private. The site was a mess, it was a brown field, it had 2,500 ton of comb and 5,000 ton of silt or ash from the Coogen plant. We built a power park around it. The tax incremental financing allowed us to take revenue that was going to be paid to the three taxing bodies. It was implemented through the county, the county proctored it, the county oversaw it, and we paid money to the county. That allowed us to put about $17 to $20 million into the site itself. And that's how we kept businesses in the area and grew the economy, and it provided about $1 million in tax base to the local school, borough, and county. I think, and I'm running out of time, but I think looking at ALERTA, to try and do something with residential subdivisions should be something that could be looked at. Especially, you got to develop criteria to use it, and to maybe relate it to sites or slope or whatever.
All right. Voters have seen recent commissioners' meetings resulting in shouting matches and name-calling. If elected, how will you work with your fellow commissioners to restore decorum to county meetings? And we'll start with Mr. Capellini.
Two pieces of cotton. No, again, it's a simple answer. We have to go in with open minds and open dialogue. The only way government... We're seeing this on every level of governance, whether you're talking about federal, county, municipal, we are seeing mass division, mass hatred, mass ridiculousness on every level. We have to stop it. We have to stop it. We are literally at a stage in this country where no government is working. We need to have open dialogue. And I do really believe that the three of us up here, we may disagree emphatically on particular issues, but I really do think that all three of us are here too, should we be afforded the opportunity to be county commissioner, make a difference in at least bringing collaboration and camaraderie to the commissioners' board. You know, we have to make sure that both sides are listened to. We have to make sure that every idea is put on the table. Nothing should be thrown out until all the facts, the pros, the cons, the open conversations are had. And I really do hope, I hope regardless, obviously, I hope it's me, sorry, gentlemen, but I do hope that whomever wins this election really takes this to heart and makes Lackawanna County government work again.
Mr. Merly.
I put a timeout chair in the corner. There you go. Repeat the question.
Voters have seen recent commissioners' meetings resulting in shouting matches and name-calling. If elected, how will you work with your fellow commissioners to restore decorum to county meetings?
Well, all of this is a result of the party that's in power. And this party's been in power for a good number of years. Restoring decorum would be to change the majority. Once the majority is changed and established, and we work towards an agenda, I believe you will see that disappear. And if it doesn't disappear, then allow the commissioner to continue to make a fool of himself. As long as we're working towards the same goal, we should all be able to get along. But it's not about working towards the same goal that's causing this. It's a power struggle. This is a power struggle within the party itself. One faction versus the other, basically saying, I'm right, I'm right. And unfortunately, the taxpayers, the citizens, we're the losers.
Mr. Welby.
I'd like to say the timeout room myself, but I'm sure it wouldn't work at this point. A lot of the issues that we've seen, and Chet and Michael are right there, the issues that we're facing, we're not facing just on the local level, and it's happening in the city, it's happening in the county, it's happening in the state, it's happening in Washington. And it's so unfortunate. But in particular, to your question, in the county, I think a good bit of what has happened in the last several months is a result of not allowing a third commissioner to have sat in that seat all this time, and for one commissioner to have blocked that for all this time with every way that he possibly could. And I think not having that third commissioner has made a big difference. I think having that third commissioner, whether it's any one of the three of us, I think it is us sitting down as that third independent voice, I hope, that's going to be the one that's going to say, hey, look at, you know, blow your top, you know, let's sit down, let's work it out, let's talk it out, and come to a compromise. You don't win at everything, and if you have a situation where somebody, all three walk away from the table and no one is really happy, I think that's a successful deal. And if you have five things on the table, it's all right, that's yours, that's yours, that's mine, and nobody get the other two in the middle. But we have to compromise. And without having that third commissioner in the office for all of these months, I think that has led to a lot of the acrimony that we've witnessed, which has just gotten silly. We need to, and I think we all would, we need to work together and to compromise. I know I would do that.
Commercial break?
I wish. It is now time for our candidates to give their two-minute closing statements. Based on an earlier drawing, Mr. Welby will go first.
There's no time limit, right? I first thank you to the University of Scranton for continuing this. I spent almost 15 years as a volunteer and board member with League of Women Voters, and we did all of the debates. And with like so many organizations, we dwindled down to five or six people, and we were doing all the work, and the league folded. And I was afraid that the things that we did, like how to run for public office and these debates, that they would fall too. But thank you to the University of Scranton and all of you for continuing these, it's incredibly important. I hope that I win the support of a majority of the people in Lackawanna County to serve as your Lackawanna County Commissioner. And I do pledge, I will work and to compromise. All my life, I mean, I spent 15 years in sales at Fox 56, 10 years at WNEP, an additional time at KRZ and Rock 107. And when you go out and you're selling, you compromise with people, you work with them, you make deals. It's what I've done all my life. The other thing I've done all my life is community service. 15 years on the board at Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, multiple years as chair, out there cleaning up, and I mean, picking up and cleaning up filth to develop the trails that we have that are fabulous. I've spent my life on community service. I like helping people. I retired from WNEP to full-time do public service, and somehow I got sucked into political life. But I was convinced back then that in my political, in trying to help people, calling up people and saying, I'm Tom Welby, and the response back to me was, who do you think is going to call you back? But if you call up and you say, I'm Tom Welby, Chief of Staff for State Representative Marty Flynn, they're going to call you back, and they did. And it helped me to help people, and when I worked through Marty's office, Bridget Kozarowski's office, when I was a state representative myself, it was, you don't ask where anybody's from, you don't ask what party they're from, you don't ask them if it's a state, a county, or a city. If they have a problem, just help them. And that's exactly what we did, and that's what I want to do as your county commissioner, and I hope that I can earn your vote.
Mr. Capellini, you're next.
Yes. So just one thing, I'm going to use a second to rebut something to...
Please do.
I just, there was a lot of discussion before, you know, regarding party infighting, et cetera, and that's going to bring, you know, stop changing the majority is going to go ahead and change that. You can't dictate, you can't tell the voters of Lackawanna County, you're looking to be collaborative when you're telling us who we have to have in the majority. So that's number one. Number two, regarding the closing statement itself, it's simplistic. It's very simplistic. Our future matters. My children's lives matter. Your children's lives matter. We need to ensure that we have exactly the tools that they deserve to stay in this county. I don't want them to be like me. I had to go to Philadelphia for four years. I worked for... Tom, did you know that I worked for KYW News Radio?
Oh.
Yeah, I worked for KYW News Radio for three years as a political consultant and as a salesperson. Then I had to do, I worked around the same time that Tom was in the office in the State House of Representatives, where I was able to help draft and lobby for a suicide prevention bill that is now law with throughout the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Even in my current job, contrary to public belief, I am not a cigar salesman, I'm the North American brand ambassador to a multi-international company where I have hosted multiple roundtable discussions at the Italian Embassy regarding industry standards, et cetera. So I say that solely to tell you that I'm ready to take on a fight. I am ready to be the person that's going to lead this county to the next level. I am ready to be your next county commissioner and fight for each and every one of you. I'm the independent voice here, and I can promise you, I will do everything in my power to make the future of this county bright, prosperous, and one hell of a time to come in the next couple of months. And thank you to everybody here.
And Mr. Merly, please.
Thanks to the you, thanks, Mr. Snee, thanks to the panelists. I didn't need this. I was very happy with my life, retired... I was very happy with my life, retired, a storied career, very... I really didn't need this. But quite frankly, Lackawanna County is broken. A 50-plus percent tax increase in the last six years, and there's still no accountability in the budget. Lackawanna County is broken. A rushed reassessment that has left taxpayers and property owners confused and frustrated, no accountability. Lackawanna County is broken. My two opponents are good people, but they're not going to be able to fix it because they both belong to the party that broke it. If I am fortunate enough by the grace to get into this together, we're going to fix this. Thank you.
On behalf of the University of Scranton and the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service, I'd like to thank our candidates and our panel of journalists and you, our audience, for this very thoughtful and civil discussion of important ideas. I'd also like to thank our media partners, especially ECTV, and our media relations team at the university for making this event possible. Please remember to vote on November 4th. Have a wonderful evening.